All right, next item.
Special reports, co-teaching, special education. Dr. Glenn Maleko, Mr. Mike Casale, Ms. Chris Cipari.
So we also have, along with them, we have Kelly Herrick who's here and Courtney Platsky who's part of this presentation, and I'm just gonna kinda kick it off and then I'm gonna hand it over to them. We wanted to give you this, an update on movement with the co- the special education co-teaching model in the school district. We also are moving on an EL- English Language Learning model, but this is more specific to the special ed model. And so, just wanted to let you know, you know, my involvement. I mean, co-teaching in the district had started, you know, well over about a decade ago, actually when I was a principal at Salina. Some of the, it started in certain buildings. It really started to create some movement, I think, around 2009, 10, and then it became, you know, full implementation at the secondary level, not yet the elementary. When I became superintendent, I had seen the power of this and how it's impacted students in a positive manner, and so, you know, it was part of my 90-day plan when I interviewed before the Board of Education and talked about co-teaching as one of the things we'd implement. And so, for the first year when I was superintendent, one of the things that I did, working with the team, was just to create a, kind of a steering committee of individuals that would sit on the committee. We'd meet, and it was a small group, but we knew we wanted to move forward with the model. And so, I kinda chaired that in the interim, and then eventually it expanded, and I know Mr. Casale, myself, Ms. Herrick, and other teachers and administrators have been part of presentations we've given before the full administrative group, and then we've done some breakout sessions, and they've done training sessions before the teachers. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Casale, but just let you know that, you know, it's a teamwork, and I'm glad to be part of this team here in Dearborn.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Good evening, board members. Before I get into the great stuff about co-teaching, recently, obviously, you guys are aware, we've had some changes within the special education department, so I thought I would share some of our organizational chart for all the administrators. As you see, we do have currently four special education coordinators and myself as the interim director. Each coordinator, with the exception of Tammy Fornier, who's also the principal at Howe School, is responsible for one of our feeders. Ms. Nicole West is responsible for the Dearborn High feeder. Ms. Ro- Dr. Olegates Bazey is responsible for the Fortson feeder, or oversees the Fortson feeder, and Courtney Platsky is responsible over the Etzel Ford High School feeder. As well as there also oversee some of our programs within the district. Currently, we have eight programs. Some of them are county-funded programs, Act 18 programs. Others are district programs that we have. They also help oversee some of those programs as well. So, I don't know if you wanna take a minute to review this? If you have any questions about it at all, I'd be happy to answer.
And you have the doc, the doc, I know on the PowerPoint it's hard to see, but you have the document in your board folder that, that has the organization.
Right. That, that was shared earlier today.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll get into co-teaching. Are, are we okay to get into co-teaching?
Sure.
Okay. Obviously, as you know, co-teaching is a big part of Dr. Maleko's strategic plan. It's also something that I've been very passionate about my entire career when I've been, when I was hired in at Stout Middle School. That was the model that we used to service students with special needs. So, I've also been privileged to go in conferences outside of Dearborn to watch co-teaching presenters, and I've also co-teach, co-taught for a while, and I'm also currently the chairperson, one of the chairpeople in the co-teaching steering committee, as Dr. Maleko mentioned. One of our goals for the, within the strategic plan is to ensure that we have the co-teaching model in our middle and high school classrooms, specifically in English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then, we also have a collaborative model at the elementary level. There's a big difference, and Ms. Courtney Platsky will talk a little bit about the models a little bit later, but there's a big difference when we talk about collaboration and co-teaching. For the most part, co-teaching is intentionally done, and we expect a lot of the co-planning within it as well. So, that's why you'll see a collaborative model at the elementary. However, you'll see later on in the presentation that we have piloted co-teaching in some of our elementary buildings. We do want the consistent model throughout the middle and the secondary high schools, as I previously mentioned. We also are moving more, and this is more of a model-type thing that we'll discuss a little bit later, but we want our, actually, our co-teachers, both of them, to be fully involved within the lesson planning, and also within the lesson and the delivering of instruction. That's why we'll move away from the one teacher, one assist, where you'll see one dominant teacher and a specialist possibly assisting. Although there are some times where that's appropriate, we try to limit that as much as possible. Last year, we piloted actually in three elementary buildings, co-teaching. We piloted the co-teaching over at Snow, at DeVal, and at Henry Ford Elementary. And for the most part, we had our co-teachers working just with the elementary co-teachers that were, is working with the upper grades, the fourth and fifth grade co-teachers. Again, we're, our focus is in math and language arts. We also have co-teaching done for some of our students with mild cognitive impairments. Some of the students with mild cognitive impairments are either within our resource programs within the high schools, or we also have, at the elementary and middle school level, we have classrooms for students with mild cognitive impairments. And in fact, with those models, you'll see a lot of co-teaching done specifically within the social studies and science classrooms.
Can I just real quick ask a question?
Of course.
Are, are they in a mixed class setting, or are they in a self-contained class when you do the co-teaching in, in those circumstances?
That would be a mixed setting.
A mixed setting, so you have...
When there's a co-teaching, right, so with...
They're mainstreamed into the regular classroom.
Right. So, with co-teaching, you'll have all of our students with IEPs mainstreamed into the gen ed classroom.
So, but the, is the co-teacher supporting just the students with the cognitive impairments?
Typically, no. Our, both our teachers support all students within the classrooms. We try not to, we try not to create that stigma within the classroom.
To point out, right, that's what I wanted to ask.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's a big part of it, and we'll discuss that a little bit later in the presentation as well. There are specific things we've done to support co-teaching, obviously, within the strategic plan. As a department, we've tried to support co-teaching as much as we possibly can. Obviously, Dr. Maleko started the co-teaching steering committee, which still meets monthly. Off of the co-teaching steering committee, we also had an elementary subcommittee. Knowing that we're piloting this model within the elementary level, we thought it'd be very beneficial to have just a committee to talk about them and troubleshoot some of the, the barriers or whatnot, that their, their challenges that they face. Anne Benninghoff, men, some of you may be aware of her, but she's a co-teaching guru that comes from Colorado. She has worked with our staff last year, and she's gonna continue to work with our staff this year. She's done a variety of things, from presenting to some of our staff, to actually going into some of our classrooms and coaching some of our staff while they co-teach. With, with Anne Benninghoff, we also had a training of trainer session. Part of our goal is obviously to develop capacity within each building, within each building. So, we had different teams at each building, which consisted of both a general education teacher and a special education teacher, to become trainers of co-teaching, to where at the building level, they can be more of a, an assistance to some of the other co-teachers. Something you're gonna hear, and really the heart of special education, is specially-designed instruction. And one of our goals moving forward, which we really start, we looked at last year and we really started to work on, was just different professional development with specially-designed instruction within the co-taught classes. Obviously, our students with IEPs have different needs, so we wanna ensure that those needs are being met. We talked about the three pilot schools earlier. This year, I'm happy to say that we also added six additional pilot elementary schools to the list with the co-teaching model. Actually, we, we held a session in general admin, and Dr. Maleko mentioned that a little bit earlier, and the interest we got from building administrators was really great on co-teaching. Like Dr. Maleko said, it's, it's, it's a great model, and we definitely see the impact for, for all children within the model. We've also created walkthrough forums for school improvement visits and whatnot, and basically, what, what I refer to these is mostly just coaching forums, to where if I walk through and an administrator walks through, we can kind of quickly see and reflect what's going on in the classroom and provide feedback for the teacher from there, or from the, the teachers. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Courtney.
So, I'm here to talk a little bit about the definition of co-teaching, and it's a, obviously, a collaboration between two professionals, typically a general education teacher and a special education teacher or specialist. And the main thing about co-teaching is that the roles and the responsibilities are shared, so you have planning time together, and you consider how you're going to deliver instruction, how you're gonna provide the specially-designed instruction for those students in need, and then you, it's important to do the evaluation together, have some time to reflect. You plan your, how you're gonna collect your data. Grading is a collaborative effort. Your, of course, your classroom management. One of the first things we do typically is sit down together and go over a form about who's gonna be responsible for this, who's gonna be responsible for that, how are we gonna manage our classroom together so that we make it our classroom and not just your classroom or my classroom. And then, also, how we're gonna deal with parents, who's gonna call if there are any concerns or great news as well, and how we're gonna handle grading. Co-teaching is not having one teacher act as a helper or an assistant, and having one teacher just show up to see how they might be able to help out, or ignoring the needs of students who have IEPs. It's not teaching the same old way. These are some of the models that Courtney's gonna go over with you.
Hi. So, I'm just gonna give you an idea of what it may look like if you go into a classroom where co-teaching is happening. You may see one of these six models, some more frequently than others. So, Mr. Casale mentioned that there's two that you may see really less time, or at most 30% of the time, which is the one on your top left, which is one teach, one observe. This is one where one teacher is leading whole group instruction, and the other is circulating through the classroom, not just watching, but collecting data. So, looking at data and seeing how to use that data when moving forward, how to group your students, what strategies need to be put in place for the future, so this is really a data collection tool. The other one that goes into that less than 30% of the time is on the bottom right, which is one teach and one assist. So, again, that's a whole group model where one is doing the primary instruction, and the other is circulating throughout the room, helping facilitate, keeping people on task, making sure that we're addressing any small needs as they come up, but not delivering the direct instruction. So, those are the smaller ones. From there, you're gonna see a few others. So, station teaching is when you have multiple stations with a teacher at each station, and then oftentimes a third or a fourth station. So, the students say they're with a general education teacher at one station, they're learning one topic, then they circulate to the special education teacher, and then they circulate to a center where they're doing independent work. You would also see what we call parallel teaching. This is when you take the classroom and you actually split it pretty much in half, and one teacher takes half the class, the other takes the other half, and sometimes you'll see that they're teaching the same content two different ways, so perhaps you're breaking them up based on learning style. If you've got a group that are more auditory, auditory learners, they may go with one, tactile learners with another, or they might be teaching two separate but complementary lessons. So, say it's a math class, they may be teaching how to solve equations algebraically in one group and graphically in another group. The other ones that you'll see is alternative teaching. Sometimes you'll hear this referred to as small group. So, it's when you have a larger group, and then a small group of students is intentionally pulled. So, maybe it's a group of the higher-level students that you're doing some extensions with and doing some enhancements to the lesson, or perhaps it's a group of students who are struggling and need that more intensive, small group instruction. And then, the last one that you might see is teaming. So, teaming, team teaching is when you have two teachers both presenting the lesson together. They really go through the lesson together very fluid, and oftentimes, it'll be that, you know, one teacher is giving the general information, and another is coming in with additional questions that perhaps the students have that they aren't asking for themselves. Or maybe one teacher explains something, and the other explains it in a different way. So, you have two instructors explaining the same information together at the same time so that every student has access to it in that setting.
So, when this got started, of course, I started hearing about co-teaching and the, and the fears and the concerns, you know, it's, it's a whole new ballgame for everyone. And as usual with this district, the, they, I invited me to be on the committee, the steering committee, so that I could learn too, and then make sure that, you know, the contract was being followed, and what we were doing was good for students and fair for teachers. So, a lot of the ideas that have come up in the committee have been brought to me by teachers, and then I presented them at the steering committee, for instance, the elementary subcommittee. The middle school and high school teachers have been co-teaching for quite a while, so they were pretty comfortable in that. But the elementary teachers, we just started this last year, so, you know, they were a little anxious, so we said, hey, well, why don't we just have a subcommittee? And of course, the Mr. Casale and Ms. Diager, who used to be the director of, of special ed, and Dr. Maleko said, absolutely. So, now we have another committee that meets just with the elementary to, you know, deal with their specific needs and concerns and ideas. So, like almost everything else we do here, it is a very collaborative effort, and I am really, really happy to be involved in it. Thank you.
Here are just some focus areas when we do meet as a committee, some of the things that we just, we, we talk about and we discuss, so we can continue to move forward with co-teaching. Here are just some numbers. I, I thought that maybe you'd be interested to know exactly how many sections of co-teaching we have throughout the entire district. At the high school, currently, right now, all three high schools combined, we have 37 sections of ELA, English Language Arts, 36 sections of math, 11 in science, and 14 in social studies. Now, that's just all three high schools combined. The middle school sections, we have 44 sections of English Language Arts, 42 of math, 14 sections of science, and 11 sections of social studies district-wide. Obviously, as you see, our primary focus is, is the literacy and math portions, which typically will align with a lot of our students' IEP goals. The elementary, as mentioned earlier, we went from three pilot schools to now we have nine within the district, and we're working very closely to ensure that we're providing support for all of the elementary schools, considering it is a fairly new model within the elementary level. And in the elementary, as I mentioned earlier again, our primary focus is really the upper L for now, which is the, the fourth and fifth grade.
So, some of the benefits of co-teaching is that it allows students to typically be in the least restrictive environment within the school setting. This, the instruction is student-centered, based on their needs. It helps with confidence, and it's a great opportunity to have a reduced teacher-student ratio, obviously, by having two teachers in the classroom. You're also able to differentiate the instruction at a greater level when you have two teachers, and also work towards a specially-designed instruction so that you can help to meet the goals on the student's IEP, and that sense of community that students are not segregated and they're part of the classroom and the school. Oh, yes, I'm just gonna touch on the first topic here, which is the co-teaching and the PLC groups. I was able to attend the conference in Grand Rapids on the professional learning community, and it just seemed to go so hand-in-hand with the goals for co-teaching, because they talked about how you identify what you want the students to learn, how you're going to see if they have learned, what you're going to do if they don't learn, and then what you're going to do when they do learn, which those two things just, you know, go hand-in-hand together, the PLC and the co-teaching model.
So, that would be really connected with Mr. Casebolt's presentation from the last board meeting.
So, a few of the other next steps that we have coming up. Mr. Casale mentioned Anne Benninghoff, so she's gonna be joining us. She was here in August and did some presentations for some of our existing co-teaching teams, as well as our newer teams, to introduce the concept to them and provide additional training on that. And she will be returning in November and May for seven days total, to spend some time in the classrooms, observing and working directly with the teachers. We are going to continue focusing on that specially-designed instruction. Again, the two teachers in the classroom aren't doing the exact same thing. They have specific roles and responsibilities, so that specially-designed instruction gets directly to those instructional strategies that we're using to meet the needs of our students with IEPs. We also, particularly in the elementary schools, are going to put in more opportunities for group discussion. In the elementary schools, you may find that unlike the secondary schools where you have large groups of co-teachers and multiple co-teaching teams within a building, and they can work together, the elementary schools, there aren't as many teams. So, this allows us to have them visit each other's classrooms, so visit from one school to another, and have discussions to proactively look for solutions to some of the obstacles that they may face. And then, we of course are going to continue with our co-teaching steering committee. Again, we meet once a month, and the elementary subcommittee is going to continue meeting once a month as well.
Thank you. We appreciate your, your attention to this matter and giving us the opportunity to present about some of the great things happening within the district. Currently, we're just looking for ways to improve the model. We're, we're constantly looking at, you know, some of our data pieces, hopefully to move us forward. I do know one great data piece is that our, last year's identification rate of special education within our district was a little bit higher than 7% compared to the state rate, which was close to 13%, and that is one of the indicators for special education that the state is obviously monitoring and looking, looking at. So, I can't attribute all of it to co-teaching, but I do know that, you know, we're, we're doing the right thing for these students, as Dr. Maleko mentioned. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy, or the team will be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I got a couple, because I'm trying to wrap my mind around the logistics of this. I'm looking at the co-teaching by the numbers to start my questions, and you might not be able to really answer this, because you don't do the hiring. Maybe Chris even might have a better handle of this. When I'm looking at, you know, how many sections of English are being taught, co-teaching and math and everything at the high school, middle school level, I'm assuming that right now with these pilot programs, from these numbers, you know, you might have, if, if you're saying you have 11 sections of science, that's maybe two classrooms all day that have a co-teacher setup kind of thing that maintains, number one, I'm assuming that the co-teaching team remains together throughout the whole day, correct? So that you might have four English Language Arts classes set up this way?
So, so typically, typically, that's what best practices is, and that's what we, we wanna support, is we wanna support that co-teachers or at least the specialists work with no more than two gen ed teachers a day. I know Kelly will speak to this, as she does a lot of the scheduling at Fortson, and Courtney used to do the scheduling at Etzel. We also have some teams who, like you mentioned, only work primarily with one gen ed teacher, and will be in there for four or five section in one day.
Does that, does that, I, I'm assuming that we're still missing a whole lot of students who could maybe benefit from this, because we only have, I mean, we're essentially doubling up in a classroom of teaching staff. I don't know how many we have hired to do strictly this.
Well, all our students with IEPs, at least the high-incidence students that are within the resource programs, are in co-taught classes.
Are, okay.
That's where, yeah, that's where they...
So, they're kind of traveling along from class to class then?
Right, that's where they receive... They're going from class to class, just like any other student, but they're scheduled into some of the co-taught classes.
Into the same, into the same classrooms then?
Right.
Because I'm assuming if you only have a couple teaching social studies or math, those students then would then move from the same classroom to the same classroom, because you don't have enough...
A lot of, a lot of them will do data profiles, and they'll also look at the IEPs, based on what the students' needs are. It will determine as to whether they'll lead a math and a language arts and a social studies or not.
Whether they need that particular class, yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah. But under IEP, like if they have a, let's just say, a math disability, they will be in a math co-taught class.
Right, all right. Is that what, what's happening in the elementary as well? Cause I don't have the numbers here, and we're just starting to pilot that, or, or, is this set up differently at the elementary?
Right, so, the elementary's a little different, because remember, elementary students are typically with one teacher all day.
That's why I'm asking this, yeah.
So, what'll end up happening is for the reading and math blocks, the specialist will go in and do the co-teaching.
Come in, okay.
Right. And we'll try to cluster as many of the students with the IEPs that need the support and service within the same section, so they can receive that, that support.
So, they're in the same class then?
They're in the same class, right.
Do the teachers volunteer who wanna be part of this co-teaching, or how is they selected?
So, typically, yeah, I'm thinking, and Chris will speak to this as well, is typically the, the specialty, administrator of the building will select gen ed teachers who are willing to do the co-teaching.
Willing to do, okay.
So, we, we try not to force anybody to do anything, because we obviously want buy-in within the model.
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you.
Justine Flurp.
Looking at slide 15, where it's talking about the testing data for the kids with disabilities. I'm not really seeing a trend where it's improving their test scores. Now, I know I'm just looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and I'm assuming, again, this is just the students with the disabilities, but at least from this, I'm not really seeing proof that co-teaching is helping.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't think I have that data right now, as far as on this slide right here, so...
Yeah, it's in the board folder.
Oh, was it in the board folder?
So, it, yeah, it is, I just kinda answered to it, too. It is one dataset, and Mike just started, Mr. Casale just started putting some data together, but I do agree with you that we need to, you know, monitor that. We wanna look at the NWA data, we wanna track it at the, you know, as well at the elementary level, you know, so, you're right, though. I mean, as far as the MSET data goes with the special ed, we definitely need to make some move, you know, some move there. And I would tell you that that is probably when we, when I saw, you know, in, going into the classes through the school improvement process, as some of you have been in, in the buildings, when I've gone through the classes, one of the things that we saw that I think we did a really good job years ago of implementing the model and getting it set, where we would go to training at, at the county level, and other districts hadn't even implemented it yet. Like, they hadn't even accepted that, you know, the teaming, the PLC of working together. So, we have gotten that, we got that model going several years ago. Where we didn't, where we needed some work, based on observations and going around, was really implementing the research-based best practices. So, he talks about specially-designed instruction, and then Courtney showed you some of the models. So, we've really just started ratcheting that up over the last year. So, I would say that we probably need a little more time to really measure the effectiveness of those strategies, and we'll, we will be tracking it. Elementary, I'd say that data, you know, the middle school, you could, because it was implemented, but again, it was something, and one of the reasons as superintendent, why I put that in there in the 90-day plan, was because I felt like we needed improvements with the co-teaching model. Again, people had done great things in the department, but we definitely needed to enhance how we were delivering the model, and, and so that's where I think by this team coming together, and really, last year with Anne Benninghoff coming in for training, we're getting a little more effective, or we are getting more effective at implementing research-based strategies, you know, the parallel teaching. And we, we did lack, I think, and I think we, we're being honest, especially design instruction, that was when Anne came in. She also went through, it was May of 2016, and what she did is she, we hired her to actually go through our schools and analyze our co-teaching model. So, she came back and gave us feedback that that was one area that we were lacking in, and we needed to improve. And again, it was no criticism of what was done, because I think we were ahead of a lot of districts, but I think we, we do need to continue to enhance the model to see the more effective results.
The other half of that question then would be, though, we're looking at the data for the, the students with disabilities, how are the students, the general education students doing in this model?
In the classes? We would have to disaggregate that data.
Because I, I'm not gonna put it past some parent that's gonna say, I want my student to be in general education, because I think it's gonna be better.
Sure.
If we can have some test data that shows, no, being in the co-taught classes, those students are doing better, that's gonna make it a little bit easier for them, I think.
Sure. And I think the advantage, too, as, as was mentioned, is the fact that you do have two instructors, so in fact, it, and that's why some of the teachers take two, because then it limits and allows for more. And you heard Ms. Platsky mention that sometimes they can take the high achievers in a smaller group, so it, also, you can have benefits to kids that are achieving at a higher level. So, it just depends on how you implement the strategies. If they're done effectively, it can have benefit, it can be beneficial to those students as well.
Right.
But we can definitely look at, with Dr. Patterson, at collecting some data.
Right, and those are some things we're currently working on. And I think part of the steering committee is, we've been doing co-teaching for a while within the district, as I mentioned previously, but part of it is how do we enhance and improve some of these models, and how do we ensure that every student's needs are being met within those classrooms, whether they have an IEP or not.
Justine Hamoud.
Yes. So first, I could see how it could be good for students, you're bringing the teacher-student ratio down and so on, but I think mostly, what I'm thinking, too, is how it's affecting teachers. You know, if you have a classroom, you wanna set it up your own way, maybe you have a certain style of teaching, and all of a sudden, you have to share that with somebody else, and I don't know the logistics of that, and I'm sure that our teachers are working great together, hopefully. But, in terms of collecting data, do we have a survey, maybe, at the end of the semester, at the end of the year, taken into consideration what our teachers are saying about this, how it could be improved, and what their thoughts on this are after co-teaching with somebody else?
Those are, as, as far as an actual survey, we haven't sent one out, but those are some things that we can definitely could do. Now, as far as the co-teaching peers, that's why we try to stress continuity as much as possible, to ensure that they are working with the same teacher over a period of time, because you are right, different teachers obviously have different ways that they go about things within the classroom. And we also have certain forms that we do provide them, we do provide, especially new co-teachers, where they get to sit down before the school year even starts, and kind of co-teachers, where they get to sit down before the school year even starts, and kind of plan on some of those management and structure things, and talk about them prior to actually co-teaching. So those are things that we all, we account for, definitely. We do provide them with some support within that model. Typically, for the most part, I would say, most of our, you know, most of our teachers do get along well, and especially if they have that continuity, and they've gotten an opportunity to work with each other over a while, we do start seeing some positive great gains, for the most part. But yeah, those are obviously things that we actually discuss in our steering committee as well.
And we've been fortunate at Fortson. We've had a lot of support administrative over the years.
Kelly, can you come?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
We've been fortunate at Fortson, we've had a lot of administrative support over the years, and we've been able to implement some pre-steps. So I've been able to meet with teachers and get together their interest in it, partner teachers together, and observe them, debrief with them, talk about what we can do to make things better, and also have been able to survey both the gen ed teachers and the special ed teachers at the end of the year. How did things work for you? What would make it better for you? And so we've had some pretty good, honest conversations on how to move it forward in our building. So I think we've had some good success with that.
Hopefully, in all buildings, we can have those conversations, yeah.
Trustee Petchikov.
One more thing, and I know that people don't like to talk about the financial aspect of this, but this is part of what our responsibility is, as well as to make sure that we're using our money wisely. Is this, while we're looking at the benefits of it, is this costing us more? Is this taking money from other programs? I know that this, that I'm assuming the co-teacher who's special ed, that's coming from another pot of money than from the general fund.
Right.
But are tho, are those monies, could they be used a different way? Or is this, is this the best utilization? Because we're now doubling up on staffing in a classroom, so to speak. Would we be using that person a different way, potentially? Or is this, is this a good use?
So basically, the co-teaching model is how we're delivering some of our services and instruction. Another way would be where you have other districts who have just traditional resource rooms, where just students with IEPs will attend those classrooms in a segregated setting. I don't believe that the impact is going to be as great as them, number one, being in a classroom with peers. Also, providing, giving them that access to the gen ed curriculum is also, is also very important.
I understand that, but financially, are, do we have the resources to compensate for this? Because if we're going to try to continue to grow this program, that means adding more teachers to the programs, and are we straining what we have in the special education budget by doing it this way, as opposed to some other way? I just want to make sure that we're not going off in a way-
Yeah, we're not, we're not overspending-
Okay.
-or anything along those lines. So for the most part, this model, at the elementary, it truly didn't impact staffing greatly. At the secondary level, since I've been here, we pretty much maintain with the same amount of staff. So we're making it work with the staff that we have. Which is why you see that we'll have co-teaching, we pick priorities within, you know, obviously the math and the literacy blocks.
Okay.
Can I comment on that, too, with the budget? For what we've implemented now, it's really just a reallocation of resource-
That's what I'm asking, okay, so it's, yeah.
It's not any additional, but you are right, if we do want to enhance it to a more effective level, it may cost us a little more.
May cost us, okay.
So there could be an additional cost that we could choose to enhance with-
If we see we're getting the results that we, that we had hoped for.
And the special ed, I mean, it shifted, I can remember when I was even an elementary teacher, too, it went to that really exclusive model of just the resource room-
Right.
-to pulling kids out, and then it was, well, we're going to start putting them in the class. And I even remember, as a fifth-grade teacher, all of a sudden, they would, all of a sudden, special ed students would be put in my class to part of the day. But we didn't have any training or any resources that this model brings-
Right.
-that's research-based. So that is providing the, which the federal government tracks this sort of, under least restrictive environment, they don't want the students pulled out.
Right.
And Michigan actually got flagged for over-identification of IEPs. So our seven percent is a really good rate comparative, because about a decade ago, I mean, they were watching all the rates of IEP, and they were saying they're over-identifying across the state. So the seven point four percent, I think you said-
Four percent, right.
-is a real positive indicator of that it's working within the model. And that really goes to the special ed team, working with the gen ed teachers. So because they're collaborative, I've even seen it where, you know, that, and Kelly, you could probably speak to this, that, you know, that teacher doesn't want to leave that other partner teacher, they don't want to, so they didn't develop that, you know, real positive relationship, so.
Well, I just wanted to know, yeah, yeah, going forward, what we're going to be looking at.
It could, there could be a cost if you want to enhance the model, that's the reality.
Trustee Barry.
A very good presentation, both on hearing, Trustee Thorp's questions, Trustee Hamud's, and Trustee Petchikov's. There's probably, we're going to need a follow-up on this. We'd like to see some, you know, results, some data, some hard data, maybe attach a budget to it, show us what we're doing. We're not, you're telling us we're not overspending, but we would like to see it. And just to piggyback on Trustee Hamud's point with the teachers, you said, we haven't had any surveys, or I know for the past copy, couple years now, we've been losing teachers. I don't know if it's teacher's salary, I know other districts are probably plucking teachers from Dearborn, going after them, because we know the talent that we have here. But yeah, if we can have some kind of survey, the teachers, you know, how they feel about the program, and what have you, and probably sometime in the near future, I'd like to see that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll make sure that we get all that information.
Appreciate it, but really good, great presentation. Really enjoyed the information, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
So we have some supplements. We have three additional supplements personnel, they're at the table. And then we have a motion that replaced a prior one, that was sent out with the original agenda. And we have number eight that needs to have names filled in. So why don't we do-
We want to pull eight.
-number eight, and then we'll, does anyone want anything else pulled? Nothing else requires a roll call vote? No?
Okay, so. Move that action items number one through fifteen be approved as recommended in this agenda, with the exception of eight?
So moved.
Support. One of us? Okay, is there any dissent from, from anyone? Or is this a unanimous vote? It looks like it is. I guess so, right here. Yes, okay. All right, Trustee Petchikov. So will you read the summary, and then, Dr. Maleko will introduce someone who's here.
For the supplements, did I get a summary for the supplement?
Uh, may not be. Yeah, we've had a lot of late-minute action.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll start now while I'm looking. Oh, here's the supplements. Okay. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of award to career cruising for user license. Number three, approval of a blanket order to Berhani therapy. Four through six is approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Seven is approval of the financial statement. Nine is approval of the Tyler Cimenti pledge as one of our supportive models of bullying prevention. Ten, approve the board ratification of the 2017, 2012, 2012? Wait.
Did she say 2022?
I was going to say-
2021?
Yeah.
Says 2021 in the agenda.
On the motion, yeah.
Yeah. 2017 to 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Trustees and the Henry Ford College Adjunct Faculty Organization, Local 377, which is a college union. Approval of the Henry Ford College Presidential Search Committee. Approval of donations is number 12. Number 13 is approval of Contract Health Service Fund. Number 14 is an award of a contract. Boy, this is, two vendors with ego contracting services for the 2016, 2017 General Fund Building and Site Food Service Fund. Number 15 is the appointment of the Assistant Principal to Lori School.
Before, so.
Before you want to stand.
Dr. Maleko wants to introduce someone, but I do want to make note to everyone that we have two college items. Normally, we try to separate the college and the district, but we've added the two items for the college, just for timeliness, so. Dr. Maleko?
You want to introduce?
Yes. So I'd like to call up Mervat Sabah, and if we could give her a warm congratulations, please, I appreciate that.
Good evening. I would like to start off by thanking Dr. Maleko, all of the board members, the executive cabinet members as well, for this wonderful opportunity, and for your ongoing commitment, dedication, and hard work to ensuring that the students in Dearborn are receiving the best education. I'm truly excited, energized, and humbled by this opportunity to serve the Lori students, parents, staff, and the entire Lori community. I'm proud to say that I am a product of Dearborn Public Schools. It has instilled within me the love of learning and giving back to the community. I'm also proud to mention that my three stu, my, not my students, I treat them like my students sometimes, my three children attend Dearborn Public Schools as well. And I will work hard to inspire and educate every student I serve, to make sure that they reach their maximum potential. I will provide the same nurture and care that I provide my own children. And I also just want to take a moment to thank two administrators, leaders in the district, who I've worked very closely with, who have been extremely supportive, empowering, and just great role models for me. One of them is Mrs. Nadafouani, and the other is Mr. David Higgins. He's actually here with me today, supporting me, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Boy, you said a lot of things that we like to hear, product of Dearborn Schools, students in Dearborn Schools, that's really wonderful. Thank you, and have a great year at Lori, and, I mean, the same to everyone who's here.
And David, we'll get you a replacement, we promise.
I actually saw Nadaf about a couple of years ago, and she expressed how she wanted to stay in the district, and move up in the district, and serve the students in the district. And it's so great to see her at this point, and hopefully only forward, so congratulations now officially.
She's, just if I can add, too, she's part of the intern program, so she went through that.
Yep, that's right.
If you saw, this year, we had a large class coming out of the, our internal recruitment process with growing our own leadership capacity, so it's been very successful.
Seems to be working well, yeah.
Okay, so let's return to item number eight.
Number eight, designation of Board of Education voting delegates to the MASB Delegates Assembly. The Michigan Association of School Boards 2017 Delegate Assembly will begin Thursday, November 9th, at 7:30 PM at the Lansing Center. Delegates selected by Boards of Education across the straight, state will decide MASB's positions on a wide variety of issues affecting education, including our position on proposed legislation and issues being considered by the State Board of Education. Recommended action, move that the Board of Education select the following four voting delegates and the three alternates, which we now have to fill, fill in the blanks.
For all of us who can do education, that's all of us, seven of us. Dr. Mead has kindly volunteered to attend this conference and act on our behalf.
I'll be attending as well.
And, oh, Ms. Nassar as well, great. So we have two people attending, and the rest of the trustees can, of course, you know our opinions on many things.
We'll just fill in the blanks with the rest of us.
And I'm really glad to have people attending and carrying our concerns. So we have, at this point, Dr. Mike Mead, Ms. Celia Nassar, and then, does anyone else think that there's a possibility that they can get off from work to attend Trustee Barry? Okay, so third name will be Hussein Barry, and then we can put-
I can be an alternate.
Yeah.
And last time I said I was going to be an alternate, I actually-
It was important that we had an alternate.
Went to make it up.
So then we'll put the next name as Trustee Hamud, Fedwa Hamud, Mary Petchikov.
I'm scheduled to go to the conference, but I wasn't going to go up there until Saturday.
Oh.
I was going to be there on Saturday and then on Sunday.
And I think most of the voting is done on Thursday.
And it looks like it's Thursday.
So why don't we put you in front of Trustee Hamud?
Hamud, yeah.
As an alternate?
And then Trustee Hamud?
No, well, you're, you're, you're just in there. They'll just, so that if you show up on Saturday, and they're still voting on stuff, you'll be recorded as a-
But I don't have to go there Thursday night to go, and then turn around and come home?
No, no, no.
Good.
So Jim Thorpe will be the fourth name. And then you, I, and Trustee Hamud will be the alternate.
Trustee Hamud, then Trustee Petchikov, and lastly, me. So we have a motion now on the table. So Trustee Petchikov, would you read the motion again?
Do we need a-
Yeah, we don't need a roll call on it.
Okay. Move that the Board of Education select the following four voting delegates, Trustee Mead, Trustee Nassar, Trustee Barry, and Trustee Thorpe, and the three alternates, Trustee Hamud, Trustee Petchikov, and Trustee Lane, to represent our Board of Education at the MASB Delegate Assembly, to be held on Thursday, November 9th, at 7:30 PM at the Lansing Center.
So moved.
Okay, support.
Support.
Is there any dissent from this vote? Or is this a unanimous? It is, thank you. Okay, next item, then.
Discussion item, policy updates, student seclusion and restraint. Dr. Glenn Maleko, Dr. Yusuf Massam, David Mustedan.
Good evening, President Elaine, Board Trustees, Dr. Maleko. So for seclusion and restraint, this is the policy discussion in reference to revised school code, Act 451, Section 380.1307. So some important dates to keep in mind is that on March 14th, the State Board of Education adopted the policy for emergency use of seclusion and restraint, and the key word here is emergency. On the 29th, the revised school code became effective, and at which point, we were waiting on documentation from Wayne County RISA to identify how we were going to move forward with our policy. On the 25th, RISA then communicated with us and distributed a recommendation on the policy. And then on August 31st, there was a memorandum by the Michigan Department of Education, which distributed pertaining documentation and/or updated information. If you look at the current policy, it is very general, and basically states developed by the superintendent. Some key elements of the proposed policy is, the proposed policy is much more specific. The proposed policy, there's an emphasis on dignity of each pupil, an emphasis on being proactive, and emphasis on using evidence and research-based strategies and best practices to support students, to prevent the need for seclusion and restraint, but when seclusion and restraint is needed on emergency purposes, it may be used. And additionally, with the proposed policy, there is a piece wherein we state that we will be following the Michigan Department of Education's created policy and adheres to these objectives, and then we have the link. Reason being is that the policy from the state of Michigan is multiple, multiple, multiple pages, and based on this recommendation from Wayne County RISA, we presented that this would be the best direction to go for our policy. And then moving forward, one of the key components of the new policy is the professional development piece, wherein it is required that all members of the Dearborn Public Schools that work with children are, receive professional development. On June 5th, we were proactive, and we had Attorney Kevin Sutton from Luskin Albertson, who held the professional development for our special education team. Moving forward, we have four steps moving forward, wherein the focus for our professional development, we will start with teachers that are in direct contact with special education students and paraprofessionals, then professional development, general education teachers, secretary, bus drivers, noon hour supervisors, and then engineers and custodians. And this will be done through staff meetings, departmental meetings, as well as a trainer or trainer programs, wherein we are going to identify staff that have received extensive training to train other staff members within the district. So moving forward, that's where we are in reference to adopting the updated seclusion and restraint policy, policy for emergency situations. I don't know, Mike, did you have anything you want to add?
We're just working closely with the entire district to ensure that our staff is trained on seclusion and restraint, or emergency seclusion and restraint.
So we're planning on the entire-
Yeah.
-body of employees being trained in this?
Right, correct.
Do we have a timeline?
Do we have a timeline? I know we had said during the committee before, possibly within the, the whole school year?
The idea is that throughout the entire school year, by the end of the school year, all members that are directly impacting with students will be trained.
Okay.
If you recall, we had presented on this briefly last time, because we had reviewed it with the policy committee, and, and it does call that all employees with the district be trained on this, and this is important in many ways. What was good about this policy is we're already doing what's required, despite of the policy, the district has been following these rules and guidelines, and it kind of goes hand in hand with our restorative practices that we have been working on and implementing. And the, the training that goes in this is, I think, going to be very helpful because sometimes you have engineers that are in the hallway and a fight breaks out between two students, well, what do you do? And the engineer is going to have to step in or, or, you know, it's kind of training on what to do, should I step in, should I not step in, and that's why it's important that everybody be trained.
Correct, correct.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Apparently not, thank you very much for a succinct presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.